Munster Town Council Regular Meeting, May fifteenth to order. Roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Present.
Councillor Mellon.
Present.
Councillor Tulowinski.
Present.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Present.
Councillor Gardner.
Present. We can all rise for a moment of silence and then we'll go into the Budget Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Councillor Leanne Mellon to read the proclamation honoring Reverend Michael J. Yodron. On his fortieth anniversary of being ordained as a priest.
Proclamation of the Munster Town Council, a proclamation honoring the very Reverend Michael J. Yodron on his fortieth anniversary of being ordained a priest. Whereas, very Reverend Michael J. Yodron was ordained a priest in the Diocese of Gary in nineteen eighty-three. Whereas, very Reverend Michael J. Yodron was assigned to be a full-time instructor at Bishop Mill Institute Hammond from nineteen eighty-three to nineteen eighty-six. Whereas, very Reverend Michael J. Yodron was installed as an associate pastor at Saint John Bosco Hammond from nineteen eighty-three to nineteen eighty-five. Whereas, very Reverend Michael J. Yodron was chaplain for the Carmelite Home for Boys Hammond from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen eighty-six. And Indiana State Prison, Michigan City, from nineteen ninety-one to nineteen ninety-four. Whereas, very Reverend Michael J. Yodron was pastor of several churches, including Holy Trinity Church Gary from nineteen eighty-six to nineteen ninety-one. Saint Maria Beretti Dyer from nineteen ninety-four to nineteen ninety-six. And Queen of All Saints, Michigan City, from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and three. Whereas, very Reverend Michael J. Yodron became pastor of Saint Thomas More Munster in two thousand and three. And continues to guide its parish and the faculty, staff, and students of its preschool through eighth grade school. Whereas, very Reverend Michael J. Yodron has been pastor at Saint Thomas More for half of his ordained life. Preaching and being an example of the way, the truth, and the light here on earth. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Munster Town Council that the very Reverend Michael J. Yodron is hereby honored. And congratulated on his fortieth anniversary of his ornate ordination as priest. And for all his contributions to the town of Munster and throughout Northwest Indiana.
Pass this, the proclamation. There's my second, motion of second on favor, say aye? Aye. And has an adopt on this fifteenth day of May twenty twenty-three with a vote of five in favor and zero opposed. Thank you, Anne. Next on the agenda, I'd like to read some opening remarks for the CDVG Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing. This spring, the Lake County Community Economic Development Department applies to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. For a new, for new funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program. One of the application requirements is to hold public hearings in the communities where CDVG funding is allocated. In order to obtain input from the local citizens on the proposed use or uses of the new funding for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. The town of Munster CDBJ allocation, allocation is one hundred and three thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. The most common use of CDVG funds is for infrastructure, including street reconstruction, sanitary sewers. Waterline extensions, storm drain, itch improvements, sidewalks, and projects to remove architectural barriers. And the capics of access such as curb cuts and wheelchair ramps. CDVG funds may also be used to eliminate slums and blights through demolition of unsafe buildings and other clearance activities. CDVG funding infrastructure projects may only be done in areas where the neighborhood is at least fifty-one percent low. Moderate income according to HUD guidelines. In most cases, an income survey must be done to qualify the area for funding eligibility. The income information taken by the survey is strictly confidential. And is used solely for the purpose of determining the area's eligibility for CDVG funding. Handicap access projects and demolition may be, may be done anywhere in a community without the need for area income determinations. The public hearing is just the start of the application process for Lake County. There are a series of legal advertisements in common periods that take place during the summer. Prior to final grant approval from HUD in late August. New CDVG funding is released by the, to the county and is in. And its entitlement communities on or around September first. And needs not to be expended or needs to be expended by June fifteenth of the following year. After public comments tonight, three documents need to be read and adopted. The affirmative action program, section three, understanding a resolution authorizing the town council president to submit a project. Proposal for CDVG funding. Finally, project applications and supporting documents need to be submitted no later than May nineteenth, twenty twenty-three for review by the Lake County. Of by, for review by Lake County. The floor is now open for the public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council during this public hearing process? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing process for the CDVG mon, uh, funding. Next, we'll move into the public comment section of the meeting. We kindly ask that all in-person public comment is limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes for a group spokesman. Please keep your comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. In the event questions are posed to the council, we will note your questions in the meeting minutes. And refer questions to the appropriate department or staff for follow-up and response. Although the comment may also be submitted electronically. If you have any questions or comments about an item on the agenda and would like to have. It entered into the meeting minutes, please email that question or comment to town manager Dustin Anderson at D Anderson at Munster dot org. I, I guess at this time before I open it up to the public that are here. I would like to acknowledge that we did receive a number of, uh. Comments earlier today, uh, the email that were sent to the number of town councillors. Oh, I, I will just read the subject heading and the name of the person that, uh, gave the public comment. And I will pass these along and they will be summarized, the letters themselves will be summarized into the meeting minutes by the court treasurer. Uh, first subject, our first letter was from Post Fatima. Uh, nineteen oh one Fisher Street, uh, subject heading was pro Ridge Road. And I'll leave it as that. Second one was from Amanda Pilbarta Gutierrez. She, uh, subject heading was support for the Ridge Streetscape Project. Third was the, um, from Catherine Slabowski Long. She was again Ridge Road Streetscape and her was authorized the raised grant agreement. Debbie Albrecht at eighty-two twenty-one, uh, her subject heading was I support the Ridge Road Streetscape. And the final one that we received via email earlier today, um, was Leah Pilbarta Bunston. Her subject heading was support for the Ridge Road Streetscape Project. At this time, is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak to the council? And when you do that, if you just can name your, uh, state your name and your address, thank you.
Sure. Hi everyone, I'm Paul Ritter, I'm at eight one one eight Craig. I, uh, had the pleasure of being on the steering committee for the raised grant that you're going to be voting on later. And I just gotta say it's an amazing opportunity and, um. I mean, it's something that fifty years from now, people are gonna look back on like, hey. Often we get this amazing area, this beautiful landscape on Ridge and Cali Man, and it starts with this today. Um, when I think about, I've been doing this a lot, coming to these meetings and hearing, looking through, uh, documents about the. The, uh, character building plan and our other types of plan, and everybody says they want various things. And this plan checks all those boxes. They say they want safe streets that they could drive and walk on. And this does that by not only reducing the number of lanes, but also putting in pedestrian islands for people to cross, which is great. Um, it also is traffic calming, so people aren't going sixty miles an hour down Ridge Road. You're not able to do that. And that's also good for police and fire as well. It reduces stormwater runoff for those islands and for somebody that was in the flood. That's really great for me. Two thousand and nine, I remember that very clearly. It promotes small businesses. People say in Munster, they don't want big boxes. We don't want to be forty-one, right? That's gross. That's not what we want, and this is what gets there. We, we reduce the lane, we promote small businesses, there's many small businesses. We're on the, uh, committee, some of them are gonna talk behind me, it sounds like. And, um, it just makes it more beautiful. Anyway, you can't, you don't sometimes realize how gross it is seeing all those wires and whatnot and, and all the landscaping that could be there. Also, as a biker, I biked here tonight. There's no, not many good east-west, uh, routes. And the south end will be a, a trail that you could go on. Am I on two minutes? I'm not sure. No, okay, close. Um, and most importantly, it just discourages people from cutting through town. We're really only inconveniencing people that are going through town, and I don't care about them. Uh, right? The people are just avoiding the highway because it's under construction. They'll figure it out. They'll figure other ways around. It's gonna be fantastic for Munster, maybe not so great for people in Lansing and Highland, but that's not who we care about, right? People in Munster, but they're gonna stop at businesses and go there intentionally. They're not just gonna fly through Ridge Road and Cali Met, which. Why do we care about them anyways?
Thanks, thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Daniel Straka. I live at one eight four five Azilia Drive here in Munster. Look around the room, I'm probably, uh, maybe the youngest person in the room. Uh, and it's, it's kind of cool to, to say that I was able to be a part of. The Ridge Cali Med Streetscape, uh, project committee. Uh, at such, such a young age and play such an important, important role, uh, in my community to get a project like this. The, a project that received the largest federal grant for any municipality outside of a large city in the entire United States. As you can see, I'm wearing a shirt that says Sweet Tooth. My family also owns a business, uh, right, right in the corridor. Uh, at two two seven and half Ridge Road. We sit there every single day. We watch traffic go by. We watch the kids walk in, in the neighborhood. We watch families. Uh, walk with their kids or dogs, just enjoying the neighborhood as it is. One thing I think about as, as I think about the, the potential Ridge Road project is, is how great it's going to be, uh, for. Not only the businesses over there, but the families and the public safety, uh. Just, just a week and a half ago on, on May sixth, I believe on Saturday about five P M. There's a very large accident, uh, at Ridge and Holman Avenue. Uh, I don't know all the details of it, but I was sitting in my store, happened to look outside. Uh, we're just a little bit east of there. There are somewhere around four or five police cars, three, three ambulances, a couple, uh, fire trucks. This is not new in that area, um. And, and it's very concerning for me because I, I have watched as, as we've been in that area for the last eight years for a business. Watch kids grow up, uh, walk around the store, walk around the neighborhood, uh. I remember growing up and going to Saint Thomas More School. I remember half-days. I remember being able to leave school and walk down Cali Mid Avenue, walk down Ridge Road and not feel. Uh, like I was in danger as much, uh, as I would even now as a, as a twenty-seven-year-old. Uh, the traffic nowadays going through town has, has gotten out of control. Uh, we don't, we don't see cars going thirty-five down those roads. We see them going forty-five, fifty, close to sixty miles an hour. And I know other people see it, you know, it's not just me, it's not just other business members, it's, uh, leaders within the community. Uh, so I'm very excited with the, with the potential project, uh. Yeah, I, I really thank the town council and the entire community, uh, for the support. Uh, the people who have not shown support for it will get there, uh, you know, it's, it's a work in progress, uh. But it's gonna be great for everyone, uh, like, like last speaker said. Uh, this is, this is a project for Munster, not for the rest of Northwest Indiana, and I'm gonna be more excited. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Sam Spicer, twelve forty-seven Fisher Street. Um, I'm standing in support of the Ridge Streetscape Project. I'm not on the committee, uh, nor do I own a business. Uh, so I'm sorry for that, but, um, aside from communication and the cycling support. And, uh, the general walkability, um, what I do have is a fourteen-year-old son who could rather ride his bike in a blizzard than accept a ride from us anywhere. And more than once I have been terrified of the notion of him crossing Bridge or Cali Met. Um, these are the things that we are constantly checking his phone for position on to make sure that he's still moving. Um, I'm generally in favor of anything we can do to slow down Ridge. Um, in that space and in the future, just keep on moving eastward, um, if we can at all possible. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, Adam Keefner, eleven ten Tulip Lane. Uh, good evening, um, as is previous, um, speakers before me, I'm in favor of the Ridge Road Streetscape. Uh, kind of like what Sam said too, I wish I could get on my bike as much as Paul does, but I also have two kids that. Um, they don't like to ride their bike around town, and I always get nervous when they're going up that way because they go to the Sweet Tooth, they go to. Shoes and, and do that sort of thing, and I want them to continue to, to be able to get around towns safely. Um, I also think with the train coming in, um. There's already businesses strategically kind of hoping this happens, whether it's current businesses that are already here. Or the new ones that are either, you know, building, um, I look at Ridgewood Plaza, which is a great opportunity. There's new businesses that open up there. That's kind of right along that, you know, Ridge Road where the train's coming in. Um, so I really think that this would, um, be a missed opportunity if we did not take advantage of. Basically what we're, we're given with the funding and, uh, the opportunity to really. Kind of create a real downtown in, in Munster because this is pretty much the, the spot that it should be in. Um, kind of one of the original parts of Munster. Thank you, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council during the public comment section of tonight's meeting?
Kevin Hayne, twenty-one forty-two, North Delaware, Park Three Munster, China.
I can remember when you could park on Ridge Road in front of shoes. Polite words escaping for the catastrophe that now was. The traffic in this town is unbearable. Why? Because you have too many damn doctors' offices. Every ten minutes, there's a new patient wanting in or out of any doctor's office. And you keep bringing more medical business in this community, bringing it from all over. So you're bringing more traffic in on a consistent basis from Illinois, from Indiana. Why? The doctors are moving closer to community hospital and now for assistance. So you've created a draw that is creating an inordinate amount of traffic. You guys want to try something to prove? To prove your point? Then I'm telling you, go get all your barricades from line Public Works. And barricade Ridge Road down to what you folks would like to try. And I get, and give it six months. And if you don't have people burning crosses in front of this building against the project, then. I will gladly acquiesce and say you are the visionaries and God's gift to Northwest Indiana. But I'm willing to bet you're wrong. So I'm against the project. The traffic is, is da, is bad here. I've lived here my whole life when I didn't have a driver's license, and now that I have a driver's license and. The traffic is just unbearable. You've done nothing to alleviate it because you're built on top of Cali Mid Avenue as close as you can. You should have taken an opportunity and bulldozed one side of Cali Mid Avenue and put five lines across it. You should have taken the opportunity and hurled those one half of Ridge Road and put another lane all the way across. That should be four lanes. Two in each direction with a center turn lane, end to end from state line all the way over. And as far as traffic goes, you can go to Lansing and see how many empty businesses are there. They, they have decorated the windows to make it look nicer, but those businesses are empty. The other thing is the traffic diversion, traffic currently go down Holman Avenue and cuts over. Uh, as soon as you cross, uh, into, you know, Hammond and then cross back over into Illinois, the traffic's coming that way. If you take off, if you close down. If you close down any more Ridge Road, all that traffic is gonna end up diverting down Holman Avenue, up to Teller and across Fisher. You've already got enough traffic down that already, let alone going to the hospital. That's really all I have to say. I think you have the bill advised. I think it's against, uh, traffic flow in the community. And I believe even community hospital has made statements regarding the fact that they do not believe in this project. As well as fire protection districts in Illinois. And if you, if you're gonna tell me that you didn't get documents from, yeah, I'll be glad to challenge anybody on that one. So I have.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak, uh, to the council? See no other people. I will close the public comment section of tonight's meeting. I'll move into the consent agenda. Mr. President, I move we accept the consent agenda. I'll second. There's a motion of second, any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowinski.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis and Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving into old business, uh, we have one item, ordinance nineteen oh two. This is for second reading. This is the amendment to the A R P A. American Recovery Plan. Uh, is there anything to add to this, Court Treasurer, miss?
Nothing to add, just reinforcing that, um, this is the American Rescue Plan funding that we received. This will allow us to spend four hundred and fifty-five thousand seventy dollars and thirty-four cents to purchase. Portable radios for our police departments, and then we do have a remaining balance that of about five, over a little over five hundred thousand that still needs to be allocated. So this is, this is authorizing, updating the plans for council. For the additional expenditure for police radios.
Move with that ordinance nineteen oh two as presented. You're good. There's motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowinski.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis and Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on to new business, ordinance nineteen oh three. This is for first reading. This is, um, an ordinance covering. Uh, the perf public employee retirement fund covered positions, or Treasurer, miss, anything to add?
There's nothing to add. This is just a formality, getting this into, um, our ordinances and having it be part of public record. No new positions are being created, no new expenditures are being made. It's just identifying which positions in our current salary ordinance, our public employee, um, retirement fund.
Thank you.
We hear ordinance one nine zero three on first reading and set second reading for the next reading.
Motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowinski.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is from the Fire Department, purchase of a new twenty twenty-three Chevy Silverado. We do have Fire Chief Mike Mark Hyduk here, but, uh, you being, I want to walk all the way up to the podium. Do we have any questions from Fire Chief Hyduk? Or does he want to speak anything?
No, just, uh, change a fleet vehicle, um, the standard's changed in the Fire Department. Where you can't carry dirty gear inside the vehicle anymore. Well, that's why we're trying to switch for pickup truck, uh, that. We tried for, I think we're working on a third gear to quit this. We couldn't afford it. We wanted to get orders. So it's coming from the twenty, twenty fuel lot.
Thank you.
We approve purchase from Garber Chevy Island for a two, a new two thousand twenty-three Chevy Silverado. For, for six thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents.
I'll second. There's a motion of second from Councillor Tulowinski, uh, any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, I think I've asked similar question before, just curious if we're looking at. Acquiring electric vehicles in, in the future. I know it may not be practical at this time, just cares. Was it working towards that, was that question to me? Well, I'm not sure how many trucks you, you, you don't buy that many trucks for the part of elements, so maybe it's more for staff.
So, uh, we have looked at that, uh, and currently, so a Rivian truck, uh, is probably the most identifiable pickup truck. That's electric. Uh, those aren't made to handle, uh, snowplow, and we love plowing snow. Uh, so it would look cool and it would sound great, uh, but it's, doesn't give us the full range of functionality. Now, there are certain hybrids out there and we can spec those out, but, uh, I'm gonna trust my fleet, uh, mechanic. When he looks at these vehicles, uh, and getting us the most reliable, uh, and most efficient vehicle for the service needs of our residents. I think Jill would like to add something as well.
Also considerations for maintenance, the, they would, our mechanics would have to be trained in maintaining the electric vehicles. And our garage would have to be reconfigured to handle that maintenance as well, so those are.
Okay, thank, thank you. Over time that we continue, you know, on that annual basis to see when is the right time for that. I know there are benefits from the main perspective on us. But we're taking out the snowplow.
Very good. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowinski.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on to letter C, Public Works, this is a street division, uh, purchase of a new twenty twenty-three Chevy twenty-five, uh, twenty-five hundred with snowplow. Talking about snowplow.
This is unfortunately an internal combustion engine as well.
Very good. Is there, uh, there's a recommendation in front of the council?
Mr. President, I move that we approve one twenty twenty-four Chevrolet twenty-five hundred truck with snowplow. Purchase for a net price after trading of forty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars from Mozak Chevrolet to replace unit number.
Second, motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowinski.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis. Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to letter D, Public Works, also in the street division, uh, purchase of a new Z-Track mower. Another memo that's pretty self-explanatory. Anything to add? Here's a recommendation in front of the council.
I moved that the approved purchase from, I think it's pronounced Cast, Castangia. Uh, tractor of a new twenty twenty-three John Deere Z nine thirty M. Fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents.
Motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowinski.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Letter E, this is the M E Simpson Company Fire Height and Flow Water Main Capacity Testing Contract. Uh, there is a memo in front of us from, uh, Director of Public Works, Steve Guntie. Is there anything to add to this, either Tom Manager Dustin Anderson or Fire Chief Hyduk?
Move with group Fire Height and Flow Water Main Capacity Testing Pricing Proposal. From N B Simpson Company for the Fire Height and Flow Water Main Capacity Testing Program and the amount like to exceed twenty thousand dollars a year.
I'll second. There's a motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowinski.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to letter F, this is the M S four Compliance Consulting Services. Uh, again, another memo from Director of Public Works, Steve Guntie, um, that's in front of us. Anything to add, either that be Tom Manager De Tomaso or Tom Manager Anderson?
No, but I can answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. My first question would be, before we look at the recommendation, is this something that we do on an annual basis? I don't recall this being brought to the council in previous years.
No, in the past, we've tried to handle the compliance aspect of the M S four program ourselves in-house. Um, the rules have changed when I D M went from a permit by rule to a general permit. For operating a municipal separated storm sewer system, which is what M S four stands for. So the town has to have a permit in order to collect stormwater from the streets and put it in the Little Cali River. Um, there are requirements for that. They've changed, um, in the last year. And so we are asking for, um, help from, from Reggie Corwell, who's a, an. Expert in the area. She used to work for I D M, um, to help us get up to speed and then, um. Get us in a good position where going forward, we'll be able to do more of it ourselves.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. President, I would move to authorize the B F N S engineering proposal in the lump sum amount of twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars for known activity and up to twenty thousand five hundred additional on an hourly, not to exceed basis. In other words, max dollar forty-six thousand dollars for twenty twenty-three M S four permit compliance and program implementation assistance. With scope of services described in appendix A one, scheduled described in appendix C and compensation described in appendix B.
I'll second that, there's a motion, a second, any discussion?
I have a quick question, so we're more or less paying for this right now, just we can get our ducks in a row, we're gonna pick it back up next year, pretty much, right?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Very good, any other questions? Okay, very good, roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on to, uh, letter G, this is ordinance nineteen oh four, this is for first reading, this is a speed limit reduction on Broadmore Avenue. Go to that page, is there, uh? Go on, okay, um, there's a memo from the town manager in, in front of, of the council, uh, and, and a recommendation.
Mr. President, I would move, uh, to hear proposed ordinance nineteen zero four on first reading and schedule second reading for June fifth, twenty twenty.
Second, there's a motion, a second, any discussion?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I, I think this is, is a, is a good idea, it's part of the concerted effort, it's the maintenance or reduce traffic, uh, danger to increase safety of traffic. This particular road all the way from. The town from the state line through to Greenwood, that traverses several neighborhoods, um, it's quite small and. Uh, I think we've even done a study that traffic doesn't typically go much faster than twenty-five miles per hour in this place, so makes sense.
Very good, for treasury, you have a clarification on the ordinance?
I do, I'd like to on item number two, where it says effective date, it reads this ordinance shall become effective upon adoption. I'd like to add some additional language to that, that says, um, upon adoption, comma, published legal notice and thirty day waiting period. On board July tenth, twenty twenty-three.
That's the student statutory requirements.
Yes.
So I would know to amend my motion to include that one.
And, and the second is also. Any other discussion or questions? Again, I, I, I would also second, or I would reiterate the fact that, uh, this has been, uh, been in some time study and when we've had some. Traffic counts and track speed counts along that Broadmore Avenue, uh, first, so this wasn't just as a, uh, a quick response to something, this was, uh. A number of studies and, and, and again, I applaud our speed team that is reviewing some of these areas, uh, on a, on a monthly or on a regular basis that we can try to find some of these, uh. Speeding spots that we can kind of look at ways to reduce speed on local streets, yeah.
Uh, I drive that section of road just about every day, um, I remember when I first moved to Munster, being surprised that the speed limit was higher. Of actually higher east of Holman Avenue than it was west of Holman Avenue, although the nature of the street didn't change. Um. I never even get up to the speed limit, uh, very happy to see, uh, down to twenty-five.
Very good, and any other discussion? See none, roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is the disposition of town parcels in reference to Nick D.
So there is not a memo, I apologize for that, this is, uh, an item that you'll see in the redevelopment, a sister item, and the park board will also see two resolutions tomorrow at their regular meeting. Uh, so as way of background, uh, the Northern Indiana commuter transportation district is having a construction project, as we've all noticed. And by in large, that construction project has taken place at least in Munster within the envelope of the old Monon Railway. Uh, there are places where their construction project, uh, exceeds that existing right of way, uh, so here at town council, uh. Nick D is requesting, uh, temporary construction easements at a number of places that will allow them to construct their project on town property. And then those, uh, then they'll vacate that, at the redevelopment commission, uh, you will see a resolution. Uh, that recommends, uh. Giving in kind certain pieces of redevelopment property to Nick D to be used as drainage, uh, as it's already been used, but it takes. Place within their project envelope, so there's not a change in use, there's no loss of function, uh, but it is, uh, a, a necessary action, uh, by the town, uh, for Nick D. Uh, and then at the park board, there'll will be a recommendation of a, a sale of certain parcels, so we will recoup, uh, funds from Nick D in those transactions. So this is the first step, uh, resolution twenty-one thirteen, uh, and then, uh, that authorizes me to execute the agreement for the, uh. Temporary construction easements that will allow Nick D to continue to go, uh, I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Is this a resolution?
No, resolution, you were just adopted.
The, the, the start of this or the, the, the beginning of this transfer property. When did, when did this take place, or was this?
So in some time. For a very long time, and there's a, there's a prescribed process for the acquisition of property when you're using federal funds like Nick D is, right? Uh, we dealt with it with the underpass, uh, where we had to take portions, uh, of the condo properties for construction easements there, so, uh. The contractor could stage their equipment or materials and things like that, so. One way to look at this is that this is a settlement rather than a, a sale or a gift because they could take it from us, right? Like that would cause them to, uh, lose a lot of time and it would put us in an adversarial relationship with them, uh, I don't. It's not my position to say if that would be advantageous for us or not, but given the level of collaboration that we depend on to produce good outcomes, I, I, I would have an opinion if I was asked. So these are little scraps of property that allow them to continue to construct, and it's been going on for some time and we haven't moved on this, uh, strategically. Because Nick D is very large and their project is very expensive and we are very small, and. As we negotiated things like the station area betterments and infrastructure improvements, uh, and how our water and sewer mains are treated. They'll really have to listen to us in a lot of times unless we have something that they want. And this is something that they want, and we have gotten largely what we've wanted and we've protected largely what we intended to protect. So it is, uh. I think a fair time to execute these transfers of property.
So wasn't you doing this and this is fine right now?
Yes.
We will do that resolution on twenty-one thirteen.
I'll second, there's a motion, a second, any further discussion? See none, roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to the twenty twenty-three community development block grant proposal, there's a memo here from Deputy Tom Andrew Di Tomaso, anything to add for the highlight?
Um, just that the town has, over the last several grant cycles, used these funds to pave alleys on, in the northwest section of town. We're proposing with our project for this fiscal year to, um, pretty much complete all of the short alleys. Um, in between Holman and Manor Avenue, so, um. With this project, they would all have been repaved and then next cycle will go on to another area.
You're good, thank you. There's a recommendation from the council, or no, what, what are you asking us to do here?
There's the three different things that we need to do.
We just, you need, next one said, adopt the affirmative action.
There are two, yeah, there's the affirmative action and section three understanding, and then there's a resolution that. Well, the first one was the public hearing, which we've done already.
Is that all done in one motion? So, no, so the first, first my item in front of the council is to adopt the affirmative action program of the second, in the section three understanding.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the affirmative action program in section.
Second, there's a motion, a second, any discussion regarding that, uh, motion?
This is no different than we've done in previous years. Community development.
Correct.
Very good, any other discussion or questions? Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Next, in front of the councils, uh, a recommendation to adopt resolution twenty-one eleven, which authorizes the Munster Town Council President to submit a project proposal to the. For the C D V G for the federal fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So, second, and the motion, a second, any discussion regards to that item? Yes.
Um, pardon me, I have, I wanted to comment on this, um, I've been doing a lot of research. Around, um, something that's been buzzing about possible new federal regulations or not regulations, but rules that are attached to federal funding. And so, um, I won't go into great detail, but I just want to say that the community development block grant, better known as C D V G. Um, their federal dollars may available through the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, and the town has applied for these grants and received them and use them for many good projects like alleys for years. And tonight's, um, approval, um, the approvals being sought to, uh, to seek this grant, the money that we've already been approved for. Is currently, the current federal agreement is, um. Contains the affirmative action program implementing section three of the Housing and Urban Development Act nineteen sixty-eight, which refers to employment and construction contracts, which is what we just approved as council. But in the near future, C D V G funds might come with additional requirements through, through the reinstatement of the affirmatively further, furthering fair housing or A F F H rule. In February twenty twenty-three, HUD proposed the reinstatement of the A F F H rule, it placed the rule in the National Reg- Registry on February ninth, twenty twenty-three. And accepted public comments through April twenty-three, twenty twenty. It currently is in the process of analyzing and incorporating the feedback and will finalize the rule within a couple of months. So this rule is a resurrection of one published in July twenty fifteen, originally applied to local jurisdictions receiving more than five hundred thousand dollars and by October twenty sixteen. It was modified to include those receiving less than five hundred thousand. The rule was later suspended in January twenty eighteen and ultimately terminated in July twenty twenty because of the burdens it, it caused and questionable effectiveness. The proposed requirements for the reinstated rule will possibly include time-consuming and costly actionable five-year planning initiatives. There are too cumbersome for smaller towns like Munster, is also likely to result in overreaching requirements that jeopardize local. Control and the town's ability to control its own zoning, and so depending on the final A F F H rule, which will be out in a couple of months from what I can gather in research. Is it going forward, it is imperative that the council analyze any additional strings attached and weigh the cost and benefits before applying for an accepting sort of, these federal funds. I just want to make that record and everybody should be, um, aware of this.
So what you're saying is that this may be retro to what's been passed this, I would try to get this, this funding, they may come back and actually have all these items.
It's, it's not clear whether or not it would be retro at this point, because they just said they stopped even comments on the twenty-third of April. And that they were reviewing and they would finalize, so if it is, it seems like it's finalized before we're actually, um, given the funds, it could be. But even since we apply for this every year, definitely is something that we want to look at, I don't know why it would be here, but that we want to look at in the future, um. And, but it is possible that it would still be today, and I just, given that the amount, a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars, it's happening to stay that for sure. But we do have funds, if it's going to become something, um, you know, the pros and cons don't match, you know, the cons are heavier than. Um, we do have our real tax and different funds that, you know, I heard, that we could still do this good work in tax, so.
Very good, thank you, other questions or comments, discussion items? See none, roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis. Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
I will need all of your signatures on the resolution, please, and it's working.
And that is needed before you meet them.
Yes, please.
This is what, what that means. I've been around for a while now, I understand what that is. Uh, next on the agenda is the Ridge Road Design Engineering Recommendation, uh, there's a memo in front of you, uh. Tom Andrew Anderson, anything to add to the memo?
Uh, just for the benefit of those in the audience, uh, that this is, uh, the, the end of a pretty long process. So we, as a town, as a direct recipient of funds, a potential direct recipient of funds. Uh, started to work on the process to identify a preferred design consultant. On a parallel track as we worked with the Federal Highway Administration and the Office of the Secretary of Tre- Treasure Transportation on the grant agreement, so. We worked hand in glove with the Federal Highway Administration in developing the initial R F P for services. Uh, as well as in that, because we can use some of the same practices now. In our usual, uh, course of action when we improve a road, in that does a lot of stuff for us. Uh, and on this project, we won't get the benefit of, of some of that, which is, we'll, we'll see potentially, uh, in the next agenda item. But we're, we're well suited with how we comply with those in that practices and we have, uh, federal highways. Uh, assurance that those practices are compliant, so we had an R F P that was, uh, approved by Federal Highway, we issued it. And that helped us by posting, hosting that, uh, R F P as well, and when those responses came in at the beginning of the year. Uh, all the department heads evaluated all the proposals, we had six, uh, proposals, you can see those scores in the memo. Uh, very, very open process, we took the top three, uh, potential candidates and we interviewed those folks. That team interviewing was, uh, former planning director, well, he was the plan director at the time, uh, Tom Vanderwood, uh, Ms. Di Tomaso, our engineer and Deputy Tom Manager, myself and. Counselor, uh, Dr. Kulturitis, uh, through that process, those questions that would be asked in the interview process were known to the respondents. So we had in-person interviews, uh, the scores are, uh, as illustrated here, uh, Infrastructure Engineering Incorporated was the highest, uh, scoring firm out of those three firms that we interviewed. And I can speak from my perspective, one of the defining, uh, benefits of I E I was both their broad experience, uh, the, the existence of a, a local firm and B F N S. Here in the region as well as a teaming with, uh, Sam Schwartz Engineering, who assisted us with the initial streetscape, uh, engagement as well as TESCA. And TESCA's role in this, uh, team of, uh, design professionals would be to facilitate. Uh, again, that public engagement component, and I thought that they did a very good job, they're well, uh, capable of, uh, doing that work. Uh, probably better than anyone else that we interviewed and that, given that this is, uh, project that will require, uh, public input and desires public input, we wanted to have the best person that. Available to facilitate that, so, uh, this evening, we have, uh, a recommendation. So uh this evening, we have a a recommendation that you identify IEI as the town's preferred consultant. Uh this is not a contract, uh what we would do from here is we would negotiate a a contract and rates, myself and Mr. Westland, and bring that document uh to you at a at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you. There's a recommendation from the council? Well, I move that we identify IEI as our preferred consultant and authorize Mr. Anderson, our town manager, to the vote to terms and conditions of the proposed grant. Second, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? Uh we do have representatives from IEI and Butler Fairman and Seidel Rick, BFNS, you should call them. Um they are here to answer any questions we might have also, so I've I've asked them to stand up. You can just introduce yourself real quick.
Yeah, Dustin Quincy with infrastructure is here.
And I'm Andrei Lando with BFNS.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions? Again, I guess my my first question to you would be, have you led projects with federal grant money in the past?
Yes.
Okay, uh in these projects, has the scope of the project been altered uh due to additional research and data that you uncovered during the engineering phases during the divine, the design and development stage?
Yes, in general, the funding application is done for a planning study, uh and then once the planning studies complete, then you start a project. You define your purpose and need, and then that that steers your engineering idea forward.
How long do you anticipate this engineering and design process taking place?
Uh so the schedule controlling item is likely going to be part of the process through the the NIBA process, uh which we have a section one oh six, which is the storage and uh nature, so it takes, there's the fine steps that you have to go through in that process, just to get going on it six months, so once you define your purpose and need, there's for your NIBA documentation, start that process, and then you do that six-month process of that, and then it's another you know, three to six months review, and that's assuming no adverse effect, which we have this good for this project. So about twelve and twelve process award is the arm.
Thank you. Other councils have questions or anything to ask the design group?
Yeah, I think you're gonna be here tonight, but um you uh, our President Gardner asked you if it was able to be altered to like the plan, so I'm sure you're aware that our, that the main description of our plan, of our conceptual plan was reduce Ridge Road from five lanes to three lanes, so um given that many stuff, the traffic studies need to be completed, and we have uh much input, as one president mentioned, the Portville Community Hospital in Mavis, um and we need to have our police and fire involved as well, so what if that plan comes back? I know you you can't answer the federal government, for the federal government, but what if it comes back that we can't, that three lanes, three lanes just is not possible, it's not doable, because we see, you know, we have a huge increase in ambulances um for many reasons, hospitals closed, et cetera, but let's just say that it comes back and I, and you say, well, the only way to achieve this is, I'm just making this up, I don't have a plan, but four lanes, and then you can have a bike lane here or whatever. It it does come a point where the change is so material, since that was like the the description, the main description for our project, does it come a point where they say, you're not achieving this?
Or it jeopardizes the grant?
It jeopardizes the grant.
So, I guess that's a big question, because we haven't done the studies, obviously, but in general, if you, what's guiding your engineering, if you set a purpose and need to improve multimodal activity, which is the general purpose that was defined in the application, was to improve pedestrian bicycle activity through through rid on the road. So as long as you're meeting, your engineering is focused on improving that multimodal access, you're generally accepted, however, I've not read the agreement, if that's a question or yes, you work for Federal Highways, but in general, as long as you're meeting the purpose and need of the project, that's why it's important to define that upfront and indicate on the federal highways toward the administration of these funds. And have those all the implications with them, that that is the goal. Uh with the amount of traffic on this road, the first thing you want to do is do an ass验is. Uh all state of the intersections, make sure traffic goes in.
And just to add to that, to be clear for those that aren't that familiar with the NIBA process, but the purpose and need is the section that this is the purpose of the project, multimodal improvements and safety improvements. You can, your scope can vary seventeen different ways and still provide the same vision. And with the vision, multimodal improvement, safety improvements, then then we can vary from, you know, we we talked about looking at a three-lane section, but maybe that's not the answer, as Dustin said, we get into the traffic studies, and maybe that doesn't make sense, but there are other ways that we could still provide that multimodal service, meeting the purpose and need. So if it's hitting that purpose and need and the scope can vary, uh to go through that, okay.
Thank you.
Uh I just wanted to share also that on Friday, uh Ms. Di Damaso and I were able to connect with the Federal Highway Office that uh is our administrator for this, we asked the same question, and they they gave an answer very similar, they said, as long as you're incorporating the elements of uh a complete street, like uh additional facilities for pedestrians and cyclists, they're not too concerned about the the lane, the what the the elevation, right, the number of lanes. What they want is a compliance with the purpose and need, uh and th- that happens after the environmental and after the design and the data collection. So they said it was very normal for this to happen, but the time for that change to happen is after you've studied it, and there's a there's a rational basis, so they they weren't surprised by that question, they weren't alarmed, uh they were.
Thank you. Other questions uh for our design?
President, I would just note that this proposal is for the that study phase that you you mentioned that. Uh this is probably contained, I think, within the council's question, but another configuration based on some feedback that we just from that you as was referenced earlier, um with increased number of ambulances. The original design had a number of hard mediums, like there's a three-lane, the two-way left turn lane that had hard mediums, and a design consideration that might alleviate, as was shared with some of the communications we got, will be to do away with the hard mediums and do them in a different way, so that emergency vehicles traverse that two-way turn lane. Uh that would be an even smaller scope than other changes, but I assume that would also be a sort of, or would, let me ask, would that be a normal sort of thing you might uncover?
It is very, it's very much part of the process, uh for instance, IUL in Bloomington, we did this this small section of roadway to the new hospital there, and became of the existing section that mediums, and then we had twelve-foot wide lanes, and they're concerned now, because we're connected to that roadway that they didn't have access. So it has, it took a lot of communication with the emergency response teams in the in the local area to make sure that the access works for them as well, it's all part of the process.
And within the process, could could you talk a little bit about what the interaction with emergency response teams would be during the design phase?
But it's just like you would imagine, you can connect with them, you have to publicly, a lot of times it's these phone calls, and you have private meetings with the hospitals in the area to discuss what their needs are and operations that are required. Uh in that case, it was both, we sat down with the uh city of Bloomington and uh local fire, local, the hospital, and local fire and ambulance services, all in one room. And we went through the requirements for their access, and there are no, we couldn't really do with their access to the hospital, but it's pretty standard, the same with any of the public coordination that we're going to do with residents and business owners, uh all users of the facility.
So one of the first steps of the environmental documentation is doing road coordination, which is basically a general letter that gets sent out to major stakeholders, the whole list of, you know, regulation firms that that get it, but it's also, you know, big stakeholders like your emergency response, your schools, your governments, and they all are allowed to comment, and that all becomes part of the NIBA document, and that goes for this whole hearing process and there. So there's plenty of opportunities to hear the concerns, but it's Dustin, nobody would be able to get ahead of them. He gets that feedback, so we don't go too far down the path, in the wrong direction, or in forward looking something.
Just to add, public transportation and school buses are also very big items when we do the job. But he didn't ask that, how to allow total transportation to help you, those are the two other things you can add very often.
Okay, thank you, I'm just clarifying, Dustin and Mr. Quincy. It's pretty rare that there's this many. My my other question is, a little bit of a di- different nature. Um I read in in your proposal that you've done a number, or this this team has done a number of projects that are, you know, similar scope or uh otherwise iconic projects, or those that might be easily recognizable to people in our community, I think Broad Street in Griffith, uh you've done some work around the square and Crown. Can you talk just briefly a little bit around around some of those projects and how they might compare to our intro?
So specifically, those projects were BFNS projects, uh the way that's why we included them on our team, was because their local knowledge of everything in the area, and they provide services that we don't provide, like the environmental protection, uh which specifically put them on the team for that, so.
Yeah, so another one that wasn't captured there that might be um recognizable uh here in in the area, but Third Street um in in Holbert, that was one where we had a lot of small businesses, there was going to be a lot of traffic disruption, and we didn't narrow the roads, but we didn't change the parking, um and we found that the biggest, you know, component of that to success was getting ahead of, you know, getting information out to business owners, making sure we had that communication, getting buy-in into the concerns. Uh that one had a, uh I think it was a twelve-phase construction phasing scheme, just to allow businesses to get um, you know, people in and out and the pedestrian to allow to all of it, so uh there was things that we had heard through that process that we want to know if we can reach out to to the public and the business owners. So it's a really, the lesson learned, there's collaboration, we found we have, you know, this isn't just somebody coming through with a favor, like what was that, maybe with the old car number ninety-five that just got parked, so we're not just gonna go pay the road. We're gonna make sure that they were doing everything right for, you know, not only the town of Munster, but everybody that's that's got property along the border, and that's that's gonna be affected by it, so getting that collaboration is is the lesson. And I think in the end, all these have been turned out pretty uh appealing to the eyes, so um, you know, when things are are pretty nice, it tends to draw a bit more interest, uh benefits businesses, so. I'm proud of all these projects that we have done, and we've learned some lessons along the way, but I think that's amazing.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, um so one thing that we heard, um that we heard throughout the planning process, knowing over here afterwards is um we need this, we why can't we have something like, why can't we look like, so be that pick your place, um you know, Griffith downtown, uh Lansing has it, et cetera, so but not all places are the same in terms of of how they uh how they are used, right? So how do you, how do you marry that as part, I mean, I'm sure the tra- I would assume the traffic studies tell you something, but for just to give you one example, and I've heard people say, well, Lansing, just, you know, one block down, they have those fewer lanes, and but then when I talk to emergency vehicle, uh or like the the fire police, I hear that the, that it's not the same, it's not apples to apples, because when um when motorists are trying to avoid the highway, they come in and they go Bernice, and they take home and and they shoot down ridge, they don't necessarily, they don't go through Lansing at that point, so you you see what I mean, so it's like people have an idea that it's, that it could or should be able to be used the same as another spot, and so so how do you meet expectations and marry all of those things?
Yes, the question being, how do you make this unique?
No, not not unique, but that people say, well, I don't understand why we can't have this, because it's one block over, they have it, but it but it doesn't not actually work with the way the traffic flows.
Oh, so it's it's demand modeling, so it's knowing what uh business around and what demands that they have on track, so hospital draws a different amount of traffic than the gas station. Right, and so there's numbers that are defined about your traffic panels, which you're designing with. Um so you do your demand modeling based on that, so if there was a whole bunch of development that was along Ridge Road, we would include that in our traffic, or any development around it, so when you do a larger traffic studies, you have to do uh like destination modeling, so in basically, anybody that would come through the the project would get modeled into your traffic. So it has to do with um, you know, the design that you're that you're trying to accomplish. Uh sometimes it's access control, so sometimes you want to do too much access, but in terms where the possible, and then sometimes it's just monitoring the demand uh for specific types of businesses and handling the traffic.
Very good, thank you, is there any other questions or comments uh or design team? Thank you very much for taking the time to answer some of our questions, uh there is a motion in uh in front of the council. And a second, uh any other discussion, see you none? Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulewitzky?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes. Then moving along to letter K, which is the grant agreement with the United States Department of Transportation. Uh there is a memo in front of the uh council, at this time from Tom Andrew Anderson. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
Uh it was different to review this, uh I alluded earlier that, you know, working with indot, they're able to uh do a lot of stuff for us, right, like uh compliance uh checks and things like that. So when you look at the grant agreement, you can see a couple links, and that takes you to the standard terms and conditions and uh that kind of stuff, and then there's links to hundreds of laws, right? Like, and it was very intimidating at first, but then you got to remember that we have used uh federal funds every year. Uh we have processes in place to comply with the use of those federal funds that we are in compliance with, right? So our grant says, the uh the grantee or any sub-grantee or contractor has to comply, right? So when indot gets this, the town of Munster is a sub-grantee, NERC is a sub-grantee. So we have to comply with all this already, and we have been complying with it for every piece of uh federal funds that we have used uh to improve our community, uh wrote surface, not CBDG, but so surface transportation, so forty-fifth. Some of our uh community crossings grant depends on how the state funds that, uh but we're we're well positioned to comply with the the legal apparatus that's required of us uh by the federal government in this grant. Now, there there will be certain things that we have to do that are unique, document retention, invoice practices, things like that. But tho- those are workable uh things that we can adopt administratively with without a lot of heartburn. Uh I think we've talked about the grant a bit, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but uh there is a recommendation to uh allow this document to be executed, uh and thank you.
There is a recommendation from the council?
Mr. President, I would move to offer as the town manager, execute the agreement between the Federal Highway Administration of the US Department of Transportation at Munster, for an award of seventeen million one hundred forty-three thousand three hundred twenty dollars to improve one point three miles.
There's a motion, a second, uh any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to see, obviously, there's been a lot of uh, Ridge Road streetscape has been a hot topic, and it has passionate supporters and opponents. And uh I think some of the answers, some of the questions were answered tonight, one that has been, that has really been a major question for me is whether or not, if you if you modify the plan, if you can still get the grant. And I think that was answered, and and thank you for reaching out to um to uh by the Federal Highway, yeah, because to me, um we were getting into a situation where if it had, based on some of the feedback that we've gotten, I feel like there's a good chance that what was presented as conceptual plan will not be the final design, it doesn't mean that it won't be wonderful, it won't be, you know, great for pedestrians, bicyclists, um emergency vehicles, and overall beautification, but it would most likely be different, I don't know if you've probably ever had a conceptual plan that stayed exactly the same, and you're saying. So so that to me is 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 a great relief, I do. I, I just do want to make sure that the council is on board. Uh, and they realize, like you said, it would be like six months, so my term will be up here. Pretty much at that, well, well, six months for the.
That's the environmental.
Environmental, yeah, so I won't, I won't be here anymore, um, at least, probably in this year, so. It's just important that, that the council, whoever is sitting here, make sure. That one hundred percent we listen and we implement. All the concerns, and we can't, we cannot have a final project that. Um, I know there was a comment made, you know. Would, do you really care if you sit in your car an extra three minutes if it's going to be a much more pleasant environment? My answer is no, I don't mind sitting in the car for three minutes, but if you're sitting in an ambulance for three minutes, that's a whole different story. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm passionate about improving the town aesthetics, have always been one of my main. And, uh, main things focuses on for our town, because I do think it makes it better for the businesses, the residents. And everybody involved, um, but it can't be at the, if it jeopardizes overall safety, so. I'm, you know, I'm just going to hope and, and play with everybody who's, I would be here to make a final decision. That they take everything into consideration.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is, I'm, I'm, Mr. President, just, I'm just hearing some of the comments that came in earlier today, the one that stuck with me, May sixth, five. The Amherst Hall and huge accidents, four five police officers, ambulance. That's also a big part of what this is about, is making that corridor safer, uh. From, you know, from the, from the business, watching kids grow up, from my kids, from their lollipops, walking across the street and that whole area. Safer for road traffic, I think is, is the spirit of, uh, big part of the spirit of all of you. I agree with the comments that you made, you need to be careful that safety is first and foremost.
Thank you, other comments or questions? See you none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon, yes, Counselor Tulwitzky.
Yes.
Counselor Koltarides.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on, that completes new business section of the meeting, uh, are there any reports or portfolio reports from the council? See you none, uh, announcements, all town council meetings begin at seven PM. Our next two town council meetings are June fifth and June seventeenth. Uh, with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we will move quickly into our next meeting, which is the redevelopment commission meeting. I do not see John, John Castro is not here, so that makes the meeting go that much quicker.
He's got nothing, he's not here.
I will call the Munster Redevelopment Commission Rebuilding Meeting, I say fifteenth of order, roll call, please. President?
Commissioner Mellon.
Present.
Commissioner Tulwitzky.
Present.
Commissioner Koltarides.
Present.
Commissioner Gardner.
Present. Uh, is there anybody here from the public that'd like to speak to the redevelopment commission? Seeing none, I'll move into consent agenda. Motion a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we have new business, we have disposition of redevelopment, do you have something?
Yeah, it's, the disposition of the redevelopment parcels was included in the consent agenda. Is it supposed to be in the consent agenda?
No, okay, so.
So you've approved the consent agenda, but if you just take that, um, disposition, that I can't see. Disposition of redevelopment parcels, um, and just do the resolution separately now, that'd be fine.
So if, under new business, we have resolution fifty-seven, which is the. Resolution authorizing warranty deed transfer agreement by and between the Northern Indiana commuter transportation district. And the town of Munster through redevelopment commission, that's what resolution fifty-seven is about, yes. There's a motion, is there a second? Second, is there any discussion? Yes.
I was looking for this, uh, here. Okay, all right.
So, so now we have resolution, we have a, a, a motion by Dr. Koltarides, seconded by Counselor. And is there any kind of discussion or questions now?
Just an apology that it didn't get put under new business, that's my mistake.
Thank you, uh, other than that, uh, I'll entertain, uh, let's, a roll call, please.
We'll do a roll call, Commissioner Schoen.
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon.
Yes.
Commissioner Tulwitzky.
Yes.
Commissioner Koltarides.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes. There is no old business, no new business, no reports, no announcements, and I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Don't move. Motion a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, very good, thank you very much.